The agenda, Casey.
Uh, no.
Wasn't there was just one hire came late?
Um, well, we had, we had some updates and to the personnel report today.
I guess it was, it was a resignation, not a hire, excuse me.
Yeah, we had, um, well, we had, we had some updates and the personnel report today.
I guess it was, it was a resignation.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll get to those, then we get into that, uh, reading through those. On the bill list, Annika, you've covered the bills this month, any comments there?
Nope, there were a couple of big ones that were tuition, you know, that were expected, so, but nothing, nothing seemed out of order.
Okay, Gary, any comments for you?
No, um, which, what Annika is referring to is there's a big DMAC bill, uh, on there. And there's also, um, an open enrollment, um, second semester for, uh, IKM Manning. So that's about two thirds of your bill list is in those two.
Okay, I did see we made a bond payment here, it looks like as well.
Yes, that's true.
Yep, so, okay, let's go ahead and move on, uh, resignations.
Yep, I'll read through those, uh, we have eight. Uh, we have Bruce Aides wishes to resign from his bus driving position, uh, he's worked for the district for nine years. Al Wernamont wishes to resign his, uh, contracted bus driving position, he's worked for the district for eight years. Jeff Lauer wishes to resign his, um, contracted bu- dri- bus driving position, he's worked for the district for six years. Lori Warner wishes to resign from her high school basketball and football cheerleading sponsor positions. Uh, Lori has been the sponsor for eleven years. Andrea Berg wishes to resign from her special education teacher associate position at Fairview, she's worked for the district for one year. Uh, Tim Hendrickson wishes to resign from his contracted bus driving position, Tim has driven for one year. Then the Schaefer wishes to resign from her food service position, Linda has worked for the district for ten years. And Brianna, Brianna Quant wishes to resign her position, teacher associate position at Fairview Elementary at the end of the school year. Uh, she's worked for the district for four years.
Okay. I'm not aware of any items withdrawn, Casey, from the consent agenda?
Nope.
All right, uh, I guess I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move. Cindy.
I'll second Jen.
Cindy?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Karen? Karen?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, Annika?
Yes.
All right, uh, public forum, Casey, I think you had one item to discuss there.
Yeah, so this month, May is, uh, school board member recognition month and, uh, or appreciation month. And, um, your certificate, um, may have come in the mail with your packet. And, uh, that's, that's your annual salary there in that, uh, with that certificate, so. But, in all seriousness, uh, you know, thank you for, for volunteering, that's really what you do. You volunteer to serve in this role and, um, often, the hours and, uh, you know, the, the different things that come up, I'm sure at times, has or will cause you to question whether it's worth it, but, you know, in the end, the decisions we make every month at the board table, as you know, are, are important to, uh, the education of students in the school district, so, um, I just want to thank you and, and, um, and I know that, uh, they may not always realize it, but, uh, everybody in the community appreciates your willingness to serve in this role as well, so. That's what I have there.
Right, right, thank you, Casey.
Thanks, Casey.
It is, it is a pleasure to serve in the district. Uh, moving on donations, do we have any donations?
Um, nope, we don't have any donations this month.
Okay, let me just move on into personnel report, we had approvals for employment. And like, we've got, um, it's in the pink colored sheet there, there are six of them listed there. I guess I would ask the board at this time, do you want to take all these at one time? I know there was some discussion, particularly with the girls', uh, coaching position, if you wanted to pull that one off and do that one separately. So I just wanted to get a, uh, idea what you want to do as, as board members here, if you want to do this as a group, or pull that one aside and do it separate.
I, I think that, um, at this point, if anybody, if anybody has questions or concerns about a particular person, maybe they should bring it up and, 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 uh, mention that at this time, but if not, we could do it as a group.
Yeah, if it goes as a group, it, you know, it goes, they all go together one way or the other, so, that's why I asked. And we can open up for discussion if anybody had any further comments with, uh, the girls' basketball coach position.
I don't have any comments, uh, reference an individual position or anything, um, Dwayne, but,
Okay.
I, I would like to, um, comment, you know, with the, the new year beginning soon, and we have many new administrators on staff, um, or coming in. I'd like to see the district update our procedures and policy regarding hiring. And, um, you know, something simple as how we post jobs, to the very end of how the board approves them, that have something updated and written procedural, um, to ensure that we're having fair and equitable hiring practices, and that we're current, um, and used consistent, and it's used consistently throughout the district regardless of the position. And for the board, I think it would be beneficial because then we would all know, um, if asked about hiring, uh, the process and the procedures that take place.
No, I would fully agree with that, Jen.
I, I would, I would second that as well, because, uh, I, again, when you're hiring, whether it be a coach or a teacher or staff member, uh, the process should be similar with a similar, um, questions and mechanisms. So I, I agree with that, have, have something in place so we can be consistent and equitable.
Yeah, we've had a lot, we've had a lot of administrative changes here, particularly last, you know, two years, so. Prior to that, we've had people in positions for quite a length of time, and it was kind of, everybody understood, and now, you know, so one little area there, I, you know, we just kind of, not that anything was done wrong, but we definitely can improve, I think, on the communication flow. Cause as you have new people step in, that just, um, we can, we can have a better job in communicating that throughout.
And I've got that on our, on the list of, uh, I don't mean that in any way, but, you know, just as I'm making a list of the things to, to make sure we're making updates on and reviewing, you know, I got that high on the list, so.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Thank you, Casey.
You bet.
That'll help.
Any other comments or thoughts from board members? If not, I guess, um, Case, I'll just have you go ahead and read through the recommendation of new, of hires.
Okay, will do, um, first Randy Beeson is recommending Katie Cook, for head varsity girls' basketball coaching position, Katie has taught third grade at Glen Ralston for four years, um, and also volunteered as a coach in the, uh, for the Carroll U team since two thousand thirteen. She had no previous paid basketball coaching experience, if approved, she would be on step zero, uh, and would receive, um, that, what the twenty twenty-one salary schedule list for this position, this amount is four thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. Approval is recommended, um, Jerry Raymond is recommending Kim Cleveland, uh, for a special education teacher associate, at Carroll Middle School, if approved, she would work seven hours a day and be paid eleven fifty an hour. That's eleven twenty-five plus twenty-five cents for experience. Um, and that eleven twenty-five is a beginning wage of two, uh, nineteen twenty, so, um, Kim will receive beginning wage for special ed TA, um, in twenty-two, uh, the twenty twenty-one rate, uh, with twenty-five, uh, twenty-five cents for experience. Next, we have, uh, Sue Rock is recommending, um, Julie Chumbly, for the before and after school program director position at eighteen dollars an hour for four hours a day. In addition, Julie will continue to work three hours per day as a general education teacher associate at the current rate of pay for that position. Sue is recommending, uh, Kelly Sander for a special ed TA position at Fairview, that, at the preschool, for the preschool at Fairview, Kelly is a graduate of Northwest Missouri State with a BS in elementary education. She previously taught at Fairview, uh, Fairview for four years and was a teacher associate at Kemper for one year. She has a total of eleven years of experience working with children, if approved, she would receive a beginning wage, um, for the twenty twenty-one special education TA. Uh, this year, it's eleven twenty-five plus thirty cents for, um, eleven years of experience. Uh, the eleven twenty-five is the nineteen twenty rate, Kelly will receive, uh, the beginning wage for special education TA for twenty twenty-one plus thirty cents of experience. If approved, she would work six point seven five hours a day. Um, I'm recommending, uh, that Diane Renneke be approved for a letter of assignment to continue employment as district, county's payable coordinator on an as needed basis at eleven twenty an hour. This letters of assignment would be effective July first and would continue through the date, a date to, to be determined. Piper's contributions and health insurance coverage would continue, Diane would be approved to work up to thirty hours a week if needed. And this is just for, um, prepping or preparing and training the person that, which we haven't hired yet, but that we would hire. Also, as you, uh, most of you know, new board members, you may not, but, uh, starting July first, our, uh, new fiscal year starts, so a lot of work's done between July and September, uh, on end of the year things, and so that's, that's what, um, Diane's agreed to kind of stay and help with that transition, I guess. Um, Sue Rock is recommending Ryan Similik as instructional coach at Fairview and Adams. Um, Sue is also recommending the following PLC leaders, Holly Warrenkey, uh, Candace Ostrich, uh, Sarah Schrader, Peggy Hamilton, Sarah Hamilton, Carrie Hampton, Kathy Halber, and Becky Roberts, as, um, these are TLC positions. And then mentor positions, Tina Nitzel, uh, Bev Schmidt, Schmidt Kirsch, Ali Shown, Amanda Warnica, and Ashley Webker as mentor positions. And then also, the, this isn't on there, but it was, it was late, um, Judy Gudal, or Jody Gudal, and, uh, Carla Flattery as, um, uh, oversight committee, all TLC positions. And then, you may not have, I don't know, you don't have seven, eight, and nine in your personnel handout?
No, they're not, but they are on the link.
Okay, yeah, um, we also are recommending, um, Becky Bays, Tammy is recommending Becky Bays, as an instructional coach at the high school, and district oversight committees, Kim Rennie, or remember, Kim Rennie, PLC leaders, uh, Shelley Helmick, Bob Pock, Doug Lighting, and Nicole Cody. And then Jerry Raymond is recommending Anne Newman as an, an instructional coach at the middle school. He's also recommending the following PLC leaders, Christina Miller, Jesse Strong, Caitlin Kaufman, Lindsay Pick, Peggy McDonald, Rachel Memke, uh, Memken, and Tom Borchers. Oversight committee, Jody Hanlos. And then finally, uh, Tammy and I are recommending, uh, Kelly Schultz as instructional, um, coach. She's a tech integrationist that we, um, have in our TLC program. And so, um, that's, we're recommending her to proceed that contract as well. Then we have one modification, maybe two, one, Sue Rock is recommending, uh, Paula Finkin's letter of assignment be increased to, one point seven five, to include one point seven hour, seven, five hours in the morning, working the before and after school program as a general education TA. She currently works six point seven five hours per day as a special education TA at Fairview. This, beginning with the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, she will work six point two five hours per day, as a special education TA for a total of eight hours per day.
All right, any other questions, comments on any personnel? If not, I would ask for a motion for approval of the employments and contract modification. We have a, uh, motion for approval there?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the appointments and, and the, uh,
Contract.
Contract, with contract modifications as stated.
I'll second.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Karen?
Sorry, yes.
Annika? Annika?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, superintendent building report, superintendent report.
Um, under personalities, you have non-bargaining.
I'm sorry, non-bargaining wages, I'm sorry, I moved ahead too far there, yes, non-bargaining wages, salaries.
So, um, we, we have agreement, you, as you, several of you know, some of you don't. Um, we've talked about this, but just as a reminder, the teachers and the, um, CESA had a two-year agreement. So we knew what the total package percentage was for those groups at two seven five for the CEA, and three five nine for the, um, CESA. And so, uh, we, we got things, really, that what that, that came down to was we knew what insurance increases were, and so then it was a matter of, um, just figuring out what the, what the money portion would be for each group. And so we got those things done, and so then we moved into the group of employees that, uh, is, they're not part of any of the bargaining groups. And so that's what this is, um, and if I did link this late here, um, so you may not have had a chance to look at it. And this is what we're recommending. It's just kind of an interesting, um, you know, time, as you all know. Uh, we did do some, uh, comparisons, well, I, I've looked at some, uh, comparisons for each of these groups, but we looked a little deeper at the secretary, uh, group, and you can see I have them up a little bit, probably, um, was thinking of more than that had we not been in the, you know, this COVID situation is, there's just some uncertainty and unknown. So, I would say that this is a, um, pretty conservative approach. But, the two seven five is, is where, um, the, the teachers were. And so what I'm proposing here is two seven five for each of the groups, except for secretaries at two eight five. And you can see what the dollar figures are, uh, for each of those percentages.
How much did the insurance go up again? What percent was that?
Uh, just over five percent.
Okay.
And are we comparable, Casey, now, within those groups and around the community?
Um, what I, what we found, we, we looked clo- most closely at, um, so, the other neighboring schools with our sec- Are you talking secretaries?
Yeah, the, cause secretaries, I know the custodians, we were low with the last couple of years, and Gary had worked to,
Yeah.
Bring them up, um, slowly.
Right, um, I do, I couldn't speak to, exactly to the custodians. With secretaries, I would say that we are not, um, in the comparison that we did with the other schools in the area. Um, we're not at the top, we're not at the bottom, I, we were, we were mostly in the middle with that group. It looks a little different than it does when you start comparing with the conference schools, where we would probably be, um, the bottom one or two, uh, in our conference. Um, the challenge is, is just as we've talked before, what's the right comparison group? Whether we're, you know, depending on the group of people we're talking about, the, are some, many of our conference schools look different than we do, just because of, growing enrollments and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, we found that out before, just the location and the cost of living is so much higher, as you get closer to the metro, that it was really hard to compare, um, using the conference schools, it was easier to compare with, uh, local and then area, or area schools around us.
Yeah.
Well, one other thing you ever keep in mind, too, most of those schools, the, and those, higher population areas also have a lot higher tax assessment as well on that per thousand basis, so, it, it's all kind of relative there.
Um, another thing, and you all know this, but another, yeah, area that Carroll has, that many do not, is just the, um, insurance.
Yes.
You, you know, what we pay, um, for insurance for employees is, you may not see that in, um, the other schools where we pay, um, and, you know, we look at some of the other groups, teachers, as you know, get ninety percent is paid of the family. Um, but we offer some insurances to even folks in these groups that aren't necessarily offered in, in, um, other schools, so.
And I do know some of those groups, too, are with us because of that insurance. So. Do we need a approval, or, uh, we need to have a motion on this, Gary? I would assume.
Um, yeah, yeah, we usually, um,
Okay.
Just have a motion, uh, to approve the percentages. Actually, I take that back, in the past, what you've usually done, is approve the overall pot of money and percentage, so it'd be the bottom line on there.
Yeah, the, the eighty-eight thousand six sixty-nine at two point seven six.
Yes.
So, put that in the motion, I guess, really, we would ask for a motion for approval of the non-bargaining wages and salaries.
I'll move to approve the eighty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-nine at two point seven percent, two point seven six percent of non, um, bargaining employees.
Second.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Annika?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, now we can go to the administrative report, um, I think we're just gonna have a report from Casey here on superintendent.
Yeah. So, I got just a few things to update you on, uh, first, last month, we talked about graduation, and we presented, we, we kind of gave you, uh, what we were planning at that point for graduation. And we did tell you that we still needed to get, um, approval, or at least have a conversation with our county public health. Um, and after the meeting, we did, um, and I would say that after, you know, we're all dealing with new, new situations and, and our public health department's no different. And so, uh, we got everything squared away and, and public health sat down and gave us some guidelines for us to go by, as we thought about and planned for graduation. And so, um, we had to make some changes to what we had proposed or to talk with you last month about. Uh, they asked to graduate, any, any, um, gathering like this or, or celebration be held outside. Well, we had a drive-up, um, plan last month, it, so like, in the parking lot, folks would drive up, get out of the car, get a diploma, um, we kind of reworked, and that's outside, we did kind of rework, that, um, idea and moved more towards the idea or the, the, the real tentative plan we had to use the stadium. And so, we've put out information to our families that, um, graduation would be held, um, in June, which is another thing that the county, uh, public county, Carroll County Public Health asked us to do is, is, um, not schedule it in May. We were gonna, as you remember, we were going to, uh, try to hold graduation this coming weekend, if at all possible. Um, and they asked us to, to move that back and consider dates later. And so we have, uh, the weekend of, uh, June twenty-seventh, I say the weekend because with weather, if, you know, we'll, we'll either do it on Saturday, at, and, and it'll be at seven o'clock at night, either Saturday or Sunday, as the rain date. And if, um, we're not able to do it in June, then we, we have July, the weekend of July twenty-fifth, set as a date. And the reasons that we wouldn't be able to do it in June are going to be mostly tied to the fact that, you know, right now, as it stands, we can't have a gathering bigger than ten. And so, that would, that would not allow us to be down in the stadium for graduation. So we're working on, uh, putting the details together for that. Um, we are limited, another thing I want to make sure you're aware of is that we are, they did ask that we, uh, limit, those who can attend, and so, uh, we have limited, uh, each graduate can have four, four people attend the ceremony, and so we'll have a, a plan and a system for, um, that, uh, to make sure that we, that we don't have, um, more people than, than what we said, uh, attend. So, that's kind of the latest, um, on graduation, so still some things up in the air. I'm sure you've seen on social media, is some of the different things going on across the country and, and in our state regarding graduation. Uh, but that's where we are at. Uh, second, we are, another issue that we have, since we're not able to be together at the end of the school year, is we typically recognize our retirees and those leaving the school district at the end of the year. Um, so our plan is to do that, uh, virtually, uh, next week, and then, um, there's probably, I, I think outside of the schools, and different family members, uh, maybe colleagues. Uh, you may see some things like, uh, drive-bys at somebody's house, where you stop by, honk the horn, uh, those kind of things. Um, we're not organizing that, we're focused on the, the virtual, uh, thing. And then what we're gonna do then in August is, uh, we, we have our fingers crossed that we'll be able to have all our staff together. We'll invite them back to one of those days and, and try to recognize them a pers- person at that time. We know that some of them may not be available, but, um, that's kind of what our plan is for, for our retirees. Uh, then I wanted to update you a little bit on return to learn, as you know, July first, we have to have a return to learn plan submitted to the Department of Education. Um, what we actually submit isn't really all that different than what we submitted for the continuous learning plan. But, um, the work that got from the guidance documents that they've sent out, uh, really, uh, there's, uh, some different chunks of work that I'll go through here in a second. Um, and so it's gonna take us some time, um, to, to really get that prepared. Uh, a couple of things, as you think about considerations for return to learn, you've heard about the school calendar, there's, there's been a, uh, a change in that, that now schools could start before August twenty-third if they would like to. Uh, there are kind of some strings still attached to that. In our discussions here, and we have, uh, talked with Kemper and also our Weaver as well, um, our plan is to keep our start date where it is, uh, August twenty-fifth. Uh, we still think there's unknowns, um, and we think we're probably gonna need, um, all the time we can to be prepared for August twenty-fifth. Uh, so, we, at this point, we are planning to keep, um, the first day of school there, August twenty-fifth. Um, continuous learning, another piece of our return to learn, any continuous learning next year has to be required. Um, so this year, we did voluntary, next year, it does have to be required, uh, so that'll be part of our return to learn work. And, um, schools also may plan for a hybrid model, which would be, you know, having to be, being in school and out of school, maybe some in, some out. Um, and so that'll be, uh, something I think that we'll, we'll work on as well. And then, of course, you may plan for onsite learning, we're hopeful, and, yeah, that will all be here on August twenty-fifth. And back to feeling somewhat normal, but, uh, the things that, what we're doing right now, so we met this morning, and we're meeting again in, uh, tomorrow morning. And, and really, there are seven, seven, uh, chunks of work, I guess, that, that are gonna look like subcommittees. Um, and those are leadership, infrastructure, health and safety, Iowa academic standards, social emotional behavioral health, equity, and data consideration. So what we're doing right now is identifying folks that we think need to, uh, be involved in, in each of those areas, and they'll function as a subcommittee. Um, and then we, we have a big thick document that helps us work through, helps us work through the, each of those areas. And so each subcommittee would do that work, and then come back together to a larger group. Um, and as I said, that's due July first. And then finally, I wanted to let you know that we did receive word late Friday, that grab-and-go meals have been extended into August now. Uh, we were thinking into this month, uh, that would end, and starting in June, we would move into our summer meal program. Uh, that is not the case, uh, so we're gonna be working on that and talking about that. Uh, we've served a, really a crazy number of, uh, in my mind, crazy number of meals, uh, through this closure. I know, I'm pretty sure the month of, uh, and Gary might be able to correct me if I got this wrong, but. I believe the month of April, we served nearly fourteen thousand meals.
Wow.
About that month, uh, so uh, that's, I don't know, that just is, that's amazing, and that's just our school. Um, we know that Kev was serving as well. I I don't know what their numbers are, but a lot of meals have been served in the community, so. Uh, those are my, that's my report and my updates.
All right, thank you, Casey. Any comments uh for Casey from the board or questions?
I just wanted to say thank you to Casey and and the administrators um for all the hard work, especially um Tammy for the high school graduation. I know that's probably been a nightmare to try to come up with something and have it consistent as everything's very fluid. But um, thank you for all the hard work on keeping things going and and keeping us informed. It was very appreciated.
I would also like to say that if somebody who's picking up a couple of meals for a couple of children, that is a well-oiled machine, and I think we should um lift up the food department under Sarah's direction that they have been doing an excellent job. It's rather amazing.
Well noted. Thank you for those comments, Cindy and um Jan. That's, I wholeheartedly agree. Okay, um, let's move on here. We next would be the consideration for the agreement with S, the S A I for the mentoring and induction program for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, so we uh, schools are supposed to be required to have a mentor and induction program for administrators and teachers, but um administrator, for administrators, uh, we use, and I don't know any school, I suppose there's some that do something different. Most schools though use S A I uh for mentor induction for an administrator, and so um really what this agreement is just says that that uh, for Carol, we meet that requirement by using S A I's model, and then this year um use the uh, we do have one administrator participating. Uh, Mr. Rabbit is uh, he's he's been a practicing administrator, but he's not been in the building principal role, so he will call, he qualifies to be in the mentor induction program, and so uh, we need to approve this agreement so he can participate.
Okay. There aren't any questions or comments that ask for a motion to approve?
I have one question. So, um, real quickly, Casey, who who qualifies other than, say, principals for this program?
Um, the principal, superintendent, uh, assistant principals, it just depends. You don't have to um, s- often, schools don't and don't include assistant principals, but some do, so it's it's really anybody with the administrative um certificate. So, a new superintendent, new to the profession, I should say, anybody new to the a profession, or um, if if you were a um like I said, Patrick Rabbit has been a regional administrator at the at an A A, uh, but he's not been a practicing building principal, so when you move from a category of administration, uh, that qualifies you to serve to have this program or be in this program.
How about athletic directors?
Uh, no, it does not include athletic directors, because not athletic directors aren't necessarily considered administrators.
Gotcha. Okay. That's interesting. Okay. Thank you.
I'll move to approve the S A I agreement.
A second.
Karen?
Yes.
Annika?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Next, there's a transportation contract with region twelve. It's kind of a green colored sheet in your kind of a neon green.
Yeah, so this is um, this year, we have a student that uh we drive to um Woodward each day. Um, obviously, since school's been closed, we haven't, but up until that point, we did um, take the student there and return each day, and so um we were, we have not been able to uh hire a person to do that, and so we have utilized um, region twelve Western Iowa Transit to um transport this student on a daily basis. Um, at at this time, it does, it it is um it appears that the student will be um attending there next year as well, and so we have this agreement um to approve, and we will continue to try to find somebody to do that. It's not a matter of um, we have a vehicle, we we're set up to do it. We just would need to to be able to hire somebody to drive the vehicle there and back each day. It is expensive, as you know, if you look through there, it adds up uh very quickly. I I think it was over two dollars a mile is the cost. So.
Yeah, it's on appendix A is where it lists the mileage cost.
Okay, yeah, right here.
And Casey, is this mileage um typical of mileage that's paid for all travel in Iowa for schools, or is this just particularly for this uh, region twelve, the cost for the region twelve only? Or is it comparable with other mileage reimbursement?
Uh, I would say that our cost per mile for a small vehicle, it wouldn't be that high. Gary, would you agree with that?
Um. Yeah, that's a good question. I I think one of the problems we would have, of course, is finding someone that would would do it. I I don't know how this would compare with other school districts. I I guess we haven't done any comparison um there. Um. Yeah, it one of the biggest issues, I think, for us is finding somebody that would be able to do it.
Uh, yeah, and I don't know, Karen, if that's, um, I I don't know that that is that comparable to what it costs a school, but um. I'm not sure. I know when we looked, I think when we looked at this year, we we were quite confident we would it would cost us less to drive them ourself. We just uh had had weren't able to find a a driver and
Gotcha.
Um, this this, not that it makes you feel any better, um the the these, this cost would be a special education cost. And so, um, we do, we do feel good about, on the other side, we do feel good about the services that uh the student is receiving, and and so um, that part's good.
It's more about availability and consistency and reliability, that sort of thing.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Um, is is the driver needing to have special skill set?
Um, the driver has to have, it's, you have to have a license. You um it's not the full bus license, but there is a license that you have to have to be able to drive the small vehicle, because this would be a uh defined route, and so you have to have the uh uh more than just the driver's license that you and I have to be able to do it. Uh, so that's, that's, that's the biggest thing that they have to have, and of course, a background check and all the things that go along with that, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Casey, is this something that we could um it would be beneficial to, since we have the self-contained class that's starting next year, this uh student join that, so we would reduce those costs?
Well, we've had that conversation, and we think that, you know, based on the yeah, outside of the transportation, uh, the Mr. Raymond's involvement and Ms. Jill's involvement with the um I E P meetings, uh, the student is making uh good progress, and we feel like uh, it it now may not be the time uh to bring that student back. It's not that we, that it will never happen, but um, we think that he, uh, the team was in agreement that he should continue, that the student should continue there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
There aren't any further questions, comments, uh, but ask for a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion, but I never know how much words you need.
Just that you wanna, just like it is in the agenda, just to approve the transportation contract with region twelve.
Okay.
They had, and that's all.
Oh, thanks, Dwayne. Um, I move that we approve the transportation contract with region twelve.
A second.
Annika?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a uh student registration process. It's kind of in your packet there. It's kind of a purple colored piece.
Yeah, this is just one of those things that was on and the agenda last year, and so we went ahead and update uh updated it and um uh, looked at the corresponding dates. Uh, obviously, if some of the restrictions are in place, we'll have to make a few adjustments, but it's doable. Um. We do, we we do have a lot of folks that do the online registration through Infinite Campus, and and we do encourage that. Uh, so we're 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 set up there, but um, and that that'll start, it goes active July first. Um, but then for families that don't have access, uh, they can schedule an appointment to come in and do it here. Uh, and we have some information on that, and then uh the for the what some people might be used to, the traditional registration day, we we've set for July twenty-seventh and July twenty-eighth. Um, and as I said, for that, if we if we have to, you know, we've typically done that in the boardroom. We're gonna plan to do it there, but if we would need to look for a different space, uh, we've got other spaces we can hold it uh and space people apart better if we needed to do that, so.
Casey, this is just an informational piece here, too, I believe, is not.
Well, I don't know that it's something you gotta take action on. Um, it's, but yeah, yeah, just so you know, we're kind of that's our plan.
Yeah, yep. And this is what we've pretty well done, like I said, the last couple, couple, three years. I know we
Yeah.
Went pretty strong a couple of years ago to online registration and tried to reduce the the flow of people into the office and that, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but we still keep it available as an option for folks. Well, let's move on then to the approval of the agreement with C E A and the Board of Education.
So, really, this is, that we talked quite a bit about whether we even needed to have this on here. We, I I in the end thought we probably should just go ahead, because we had a two-year agreement, and this, so this, this is now the master uh contractor, it's really now two pages, uh, where the contract used to be, as you know, thick, thicker. Um, most of that stuff's down the handbook, but the the base wages did change because we added two hundred and thirty dollars to the base uh as part of the agreement, and so uh then you now see what the base is in each column, so B A, B A plus fifteen, M A, M A plus fifteen, and M A plus thirty. And uh, those are, now you you bargain base wages really uh under um, chapter twenty now, and so that's what they'll be for next year, and you can see what the nurse uh, base is, and then we did make some changes uh to the supplemental uh pay uh schedule, and so you can see now what um what pay for for coaches and sponsors um uh now are. I don't know, Gary, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Um, yeah, it pretty, pretty simple. Um, this year, um, the first thing we did is increase the insurance by the amount that that we received, um, you know, our premium increase. That averaged between the single and the family, that went up uh five point three six percent. And then, um, like Casey said, we made some adjustments in some of the coaching areas. Um, a couple of the schools, we're we're going to be having a couple new schools join our conference, and um, a couple of them had done some um comparisons uh within the conference as to what other schools were paying. So, that information was was helpful for us, and I would say just as a general comment, we found that um, our pay with the major sports, uh, we were very competitive, no problems there. Um, some of the minor sports, um, such as soccer, golf, um, baseball, softball, we were low in comparison to the other districts. In fact, some of those, we were on the very bottom. Um, so we made some adjustments in those areas so that we would be competitive uh within the conference, and um and then we, like Casey said, we increased the base by uh two hundred and thirty dollars, and then that got us to our two point seven five, which is what we were working towards.
Any questions um from any board members?
I will say on the coaching uh increases, we had not made any coaching increases for a number of years. Um, and and part of the reason, I think, for that is that um, when you make changes in the coaching assignments, and that increases the cost, and so then that's less money that you can increase the base. Um, so, uh, we were, we were glad to to make those changes, and it's something that we just don't do very often.
Well, Gary, too, this is something that came from the staff, too, that brought this to us, that to modify, make these changes. That's part of, I think, what make that go pretty smooth.
Yeah.
To take with with the base and that.
One of the things I noticed is there's not a silver cord. I thought we had talked about a year, year and a half ago about adding silver cord to um, be one of the supplementary pay.
We had, there's actually a couple more positions that we had discussed. Um, at this point, um, either we weren't, not that we were against it, we just weren't ready to make those changes yet. I think there's some more information that we needed. Um, there was, there were a couple other positions that we did talk about, and I should say, too, one I kind of forgot about that we added was um under uh, student, let's see here, under student senate, there used to only be a stipend for high school, and now there's also one for middle school. So, um, I think there probably will be a couple more that we'll be looking at next year. Um, but yes, the silver cord was one that was discussed.
And there, I, we also talked on a couple of those that Gary's referencing, you know, we may, we may uh you know, to, it it could be something that we just don't add to this. It doesn't mean you couldn't pay somebody a stipend for it, but um, at least in that first year, so we'll, we'll keep talking about it, but uh yeah, there's about three or four, I think, that that uh aren't on here right now that are in the hopper, I would say.
So, basically, um, what happens, I'm just trying to understand this now that the new uh law went into effect a couple of years ago. Um, that committee decides what positions will get stipended. Is that correct?
Uh, well, we, so really, what you, what we did this year, how it looked is, we have the committee, and we met uh, what do we meet, Gary? We started meeting in the fall, Dwayne and I and Gary and Tom and uh Sandy and Jesse. And we just started talking, we start, we were talking about coaching pay, uh, positions to add, different things. Um, and then uh, yeah, so those conversations led to um led to some of the things that we that are on here, and um but you you know, you still do kind of negotiate some things, uh, but really, I guess I look at it like we, we kind of have conversations and we try to explain, we hear what their point of view is, and we can, we give ours, and then um it leads to that, but really, there's a, there's only, there's, we talk about things that aren't even uh, you don't even negotiate anymore. Like, we had, we spent a lot of time on health insurance, which you can't even negotiate anymore. So, we're having conversations, so I don't say, I guess I would not say that that committee decides what goes on here and what doesn't, but. if it's in this agreement right here, if we put it in this agreement, we have to agree.
So for instance, if an administrator brought to you, Casey, and said, we really need to do a stipend for this, then it can be done. It's just not in the master contract then?
Right, you can do things outside of it now, and that's one of the things we did talk about because they, the teachers asked about pay for at the middle school for helping with scheduling, which we didn't pay last year, and, and we, we told them we do want to kind of be upfront with them so they know what things we're paying stipends for and what things we aren't. And so we, we do want to be transparent with them with that, so there's not things that people don't know about, but yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You bet.
And I think Jen, too, there was some discussion on maybe not so much about the stipend, but about the responsibilities of the position. And that if we were going to add one, we wanted to make sure that the stipend that we were paying was commensurate with what the responsibilities were. In, in some cases, I think there was almost too much requested of the position for what our stipend we were planning on, and so it's not that we were against it, it's just that I think we were too early to, to agree yet. And I think some of those things we could get nailed down before next year, so at least they're very open-minded to some of these things, so.
Gary, I have one question for you.
Sure.
Hey, I see that you have different levels here according to education, BA, BA plus 15, MA, and such for the teachers. For nurses, this income or this stipend, is, is it based on an associate nurse or BA nurse, BS nurse, master's nurse? Does that make it, does that delineation make a difference?
Or those, I, I believe those are all RNs. So
BS or RN?
Yeah, we used to have, and I think it is still in our CESA contract, we have what we call Health Assistance. And if we had any that were not RNs, they were like LPNs or whatever, we would have them in that contract under the Health Assistance. But we haven't had any Health Assistance for probably five or about four or five years, probably. And so all of them that we employ now, there's three, they're all RNs.
Are they, do they have bachelor's degrees or just RNs?
I don't think bachelor's degree is a requirement.
Okay, that's why I just, I was looking at the pay scale that you broke down for the teachers, and I didn't know if you had one broken down for the nurses like that as such as well, so it's not required than a degree, the BS is not required, RN is the only thing that's required.
Right.
They also get, Karen, the Medicare, wasn't it, or Medicaid, Gary, didn't they have to have a bachelor's to submit Medicaid for us to get reimbursed for them to have Medicaid? Wasn't that it?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah.
They get a coordinator money for that, too.
Yeah.
I was just curious, because I saw the breakdown with the teachers with different degrees, actually having different levels. That's why I was curious about. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Anybody else's questions, or if not, I guess I just ask for a motion to agree, to approve the agreement with the Carol Education Association Board.
I'll move to approve the CEA agreement with the board, master contract.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Annika?
Yes.
Okay, moving forward, we'll go to the CESA agreement.
And I don't have a document yet. We just got things, it was Friday, I think, when we finally put that, got that all ironed out. I think, Gary, do you have the information you want to share with them on that?
Yeah, I can kind of run through this. Excuse me. There's actually two, two groups that we're working with here. One being the teacher associates, and then the other being drivers. And if we start with the teacher associates, this group gets insurance. Now, the ironic thing is that several years ago, and probably two or three years ago, they agreed to a higher deductible on insurance. So instead of a $500 deductible, they have a 750 deductible. Now, the ironic thing is their insurance went up more than the teachers did. It went up 6.63% for theirs. And so what we were shooting for, you know, we settled in the two-year agreement for 3.59%. So we put the insurance in there. It affects only the TAs and then one bus driver. That's the driver that we use to transport students between the high school, DMAC, and I think they go to Kemper, too. They also move mail and printing for us. But anyway, so the, the increases then for the TAs, and we have three levels, regular ed, special ed, and severe and profound special ed. All three of those would go up 30 cents per hour. Then with the bus driver group, there are actually three categories as well. By far, the largest is the route drivers. And they would go up 59 cents per hour. One of the reasons they're higher is that they don't get insurance. Then a second group that we have is the activity and field trip drivers, and that's, they're paid hourly, just like what you would think. They, they go to away activities. Those, we went up 60 cents per hour. And then the last would be that one student supply driver that does get insurance. And that position went up 25 cents per hour. So that would total then to the five point, or 3.59. It's always a little hard to get your percentages to come out exactly right because you have two groups that comprise the largest percentage, and that being the special ed TAs and the route drivers. How we figured this, and this is what they requested, is that last year, the route drivers got 60 cents. And last year, the percent of settlement was the same as this year. So the, what the route drivers requested is that their rate of pay be similar to what it was last year. Then we would adjust the TAs because the insurance last year went up just over 3%. This year, it was 6.6. So then the, the TA got a lesser increase because of that increase in the insurance. I think last year, the TAs were about 46 or 7 cents, and so this year, it worked out to the 30. So again, that's kind of what they requested, and so I worked up a proposal that would, would fit that.
So that's really all we had for CESA for you.
I'll move to approve the CESA agreement. Second.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Annika?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go on to the CEA handbook here then, next.
Yeah, Employee Handbook, and this is really, so those of you that are new on the board, last year, they moved the the, the contract used to be really, a lot of the things that are in here were in the, the master contract. And so they, those things got moved to a handbook. We are proposing any changes to the handbook this year. So I, we went ahead and had it put on this agenda so it could be approved, and that way, folks know with contracts being out, what the handbook says, and the handbook has language about leave and, and what are some of the other big things there? Workday, evaluation, grievances, those kind of things. All that used to be in the master contract. And so we're proposing just to leave it as it is for next year. And this is another thing that we've, we had some brief conversations in our Labor Management Committee meetings about, so.
It's got sick leave in there, too, and that.
Yes, sick leave, yep.
So Casey, any comment? I mean, as far as with the, you know, the CEA group, I mean, they're totally on board as far as with this agreement as it reads right now.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think the big thing, one of the big reasons why our big concerns the teachers had when the changes to Chapter 20 came is that the, what you see in front of you here, all this used to be in a contract that you couldn't change unless you, you the management and labor agreed to those changes. And so the big concern was, okay, now we don't have any control or say in changes that are made, and so anything that, you know, we want to, we want to sit down and through that Labor Management Committee and discuss any changes that, that we would want to make. Ultimately, the board is the, is the deciding, they decide, they're the deciding body on any changes that come here, so as we go forward, any changes to this handbook will be run through that committee so you can be confident knowing that the teachers know, know or knew any, of any changes, so really, the big thing is, is everything, the things that are in here have been in place for many years, and they've worked for us. It's not that there are some things we need to look at. We will look at some things, but for right now, we're proposing just to keep it, keep it as it is.
Any questions from any board members? If not, I guess we'd ask for approval of the handbook.
You need a motion to approve this CESA employee handbook?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the CESA employee handbook as written.
CE, this one, CEA.
Oh, I'm sorry, CEA.
Do you want to do them both in one motion?
Oh.
Do you want to do them both in one motion?
Sure.
No changes to either.
No. Okay, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of time. There we go, so make a motion to approve the CEA employee handbook, and then the, we haven't even, there's no change to the CESA, so.
No.
And the CESA employee handbook as written.
I'll second it.
We all second it.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Annika?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, there's a job description update next. It's kind of a neon, neon kind of yellow colored in your packet towards the back, the description.
So this is, this position was, is pretty new, and so Jen, you called earlier about the work done last year. I did look, and I actually got the board minutes out, and this was the one that was approved in that meeting, so I don't know, you guys maybe talked about the different title, but I'm not sure, but this is the title that's on it.
Thank you for looking.
You betcha. But you can see the changes we, we struck through, some things, just because like the office duties disposition is housed in this office. And so we want to make sure that was correct. These, the 10, 11, 10, up here, it says you got to have a high school diploma, so we just thought that was repetitive. And then you can see this one. This isn't something that was in the job description before, but we, we want to add, make, add this person to do, be able to do work on the district website, especially the things that like handbooks, and some of the stuff, we want to make sure stays current. We think some of that thing, some of that work can be done here in this office and through that position. And then number 12, working with our Transportation Department, TransFinder is the software we use to help with setting up routes and things, and so we think it makes sense that the red, this person, they enter students into Infinite Campus that then takes that information and puts it into TransFinder. And so we want that person to be able to work with both of those systems. And then also be able that, they would be able then to help Jeff with Jeff Cullen with some of the setting up of routes and those kind of things. So that's what number 12 is, that's an addition. And yeah, that's what you got in front of you.
I have a question. You've crossed through the pre-employment background check. Do they not need a background check to be this position?
Well, well, again, we just thought that was, we, we do that on anybody, so that doesn't mean you don't have to have one, so everybody's required to have one on on hire, and then we have to do five checks every five years, recheck, so we just didn't think it was necessary and really fit, especially when you look at this 1 through 13, these are performance responsibilities.
Right.
And so that's why it's not in there.
Okay. For me.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the Student Information Specialist Secretary description.
A second.
Karen?
Yes.
Annika?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jennifer? Dwayne?
Yes. Okay, we'll get into the Business Office Report. We have some lunch prices for 2021. I mean, do those already or not?
What was that, Dwayne?
Oh, just on those lunch prices. Did we do those last month, or?
No, and I'll be honest with you, I've been struggling here as to what to say, but I know what I want to do, and that is to keep them the same because I, I think you know, people will have financial hardships. I don't think there's any question about that. I, I think I am going to recommend that we table this until next month. It, it would give me a chance to look at some of our figures. You know, we are paying our food service staff, even though probably half of them aren't working. So our, our revenues have been cut a little bit, too. So I think I would recommend that we table it until the next meeting, but we're going to do everything possible to, to try to keep it the same. I really don't think this is the year to, to increase prices for, for lunches, so.
Okay, that sounds good, Gary. Let's just move that forward then to next month's agenda. And then we'll just go ahead and move on to the Capitol. Anybody else, any comments with that?
The, oops, hot water heater. We have a hot water heater that's needs replaced here at Adams, and you've got the quotes for that. We're recommending a quote from Carroll Control, I believe.
Yep.
Yeah, for 11,350. $11,350. You can see we had three quotes. You can see we had three quotes.
Like different.
Yeah. Yep. And Jeff has reviewed these closely and we're we we. He's recommending the one that bid from Carol Control.
Okay. So go ahead and I guess would ask for a motion to prove that. Go ahead and state the cost on it too there if you with eleven thousand three fifty.
I move to approve the water heater quote from Carol Control Systems for eleven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Annika.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yeah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Dwayne.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Okay, technology purchases.
Yeah, this is another one of those where I don't know, we maybe didn't even need to put it on here, but I at least wanted to make you aware of it. We each year we buy more Chromebooks, just kind of to keep. You know, some come in, we buy some new ones and then we we get rid of some that are old, the oldest machines maybe or. The the ones that aren't working. But Craig is. Put in a request for three hundred and fifty Chromebooks from a company called Fireflies. Computers that we've used before. They're a hundred ninety nine dollars apiece. Put that with the. Some software licensing, the total on that seventy eight thousand. Seventy eight fifty dollars. So I guess. It's one of those where the per unit, they're a hundred ninety nine. So we wouldn't necessarily have had to brought it to you. But with that total, I just want to at least make sure that you're aware that that we're doing that. It's not a special purchase. It's nothing out of the nor ordinary. But just so you're aware that that we do have that. It's that time of year that we put that in, so.
Have we done a good job on getting money back from the broken, that policy that we had for the broken Chromebooks?
As far as selling out, selling the ones that are from kids.
No, the ones, the breakdown insurance.
Oh, breakdown insurance.
Yeah, breakdown insurance.
Yeah, I don't, Gary, do you, do we turn in quite a few on that?
Yeah, it's. You know, when we renewed that policy last, now, I will say that the first couple of years, we. I didn't see much of a return on that, but I think it was last year. We got back almost what we paid in in premiums. So I think. Some of that is, of course, they reduced our premium a little bit, but also I think we're finally catching on and. Doing a much better job in reporting all of those. And it, we have done much, much better on utilizing that breakdown. Insurance policy than certainly the first year and a half or so, so.
Yeah, Gary, that comes out of the management fund, was it not? And then, of course, any revenue comeback goes into the general fund, which gets used in the classroom, so.
Yep.
You can't get the expense in an in areas that we don't tend to be short on monies. And then the return comes back into the general fund, which is a little more of a. Tighter fund, so that's that's a good deal.
I'll move to approve the technology purchases.
Second.
Cindy.
Yeah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Dwayne.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Annika.
Yeah.
Okay, we're new a summer kind of a projects, buildings and grounds, in case he was gonna give us a kind of an update there.
Yeah. So, you know, I would say normally you, we would have probably last month, you would have seen more. Well, let me back up and say, you know, back in March, we were, we were gonna really dig in and. Do some work on just kind of evaluating our facilities and and creating or updating a facility plan. But we that kind of got. We got thrown a loop with. With the COVID. So we really, you would normally see more things in front of you for consideration in terms of facilities, I would say. Where we're at right now, as you know, last month, we approved the new carpet at the middle school, which today they finished putting that in. So they got. They got right on that. We you a month or two ago, you approved. Installation of the hand, the push button openers for three of the buildings and that work has been done. We, Jeff is still in the process of gathering some quotes or pricing on some other things. Some of the things that we're we're trying to get. Cost information on are some high school parking lot repairs, some painting at in in some of the buildings. Of wall interior painting, some concrete repair, window replacement. We still have some windows to replace that he's getting some quotes on. Flooring in the high school music room, Jeff's working on that. And so we don't have anything in front of you tonight for that. I would say that, and I mentioned this before, one of the things that we're probably going to be a little extra cautious with is. Are we, we really don't know the impact of our safe fund, especially with sales tax receipts. We really don't know what that's gonna look like. And also pebble on, so. We we're gonna, we're get, we're getting that information. And you may see more of a conservative approach than than what we normally would do. In the summer in terms of projects. But that's, that's kind of some of the things that he's working on. Besides that, you know, there's things that each spring, the we have elevate roofing come in and look. Inspect our roofs and some some minor things usually come up from those inspections. We don't, we're not scheduled to do a roof repair this year. We put it off for another year. But there's a good chance next summer, we will need to do a large section of roof at the high school. So that's something we need to keep in mind too, as we think about projects for this summer. And some uncertainty around the funds that we would normally use for that. So that's kind of. You you know where we're at with. With summer projects, we don't have anything in front of you tonight for consideration, but. That's kind of an update on 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 where we're at in terms of that. And then, you know, hopefully, maybe even this summer, we can get that. I'm I'm got my fingers crossed, we can get our group together. And be able to do some walkthroughs in our buildings and get that evaluation done early, so we can have a good plan. Going into that next school year, so. Or at least early in the next school year.
Yeah, Casey, about three, I remember Jen, you can help, about three or four years ago, we did meet as a board and kind of looked at. Kind of did a little bit of a board retreat towards some of the buildings with things that Jeff wanted to point out and.
Okay.
It's up to speed. So if we could do that.
Yeah.
Make August would be a good thing to possibly do and.
You bet.
I think that would be good for all the board members again, especially the newer ones to kind of get in and see what projects we're working on, or at least they're on the dock. At maybe the next year or so to be taken a look at for improvements.
One thing I remember, Dwayne, I was trying to remember when we did it, but I think it was two years ago. Remember, we did the patchwork at the high school parking lot and they told us that we had to do a tar and. Rock or we lost a warranty within two years or something like that.
I don't remember the specifics, but I know when you mentioned work on the parking lot out there again, I'm kind of like, uh, here, you know, we're just.
Yeah.
Seemed like we keep laying dollars down out there and it just seems like we're not really, are we getting ahead of it or not?
I know it's it's, I was out there a couple of weeks ago and it's like pothole galore again out there with it.
Yeah.
That might be something we should look at, if there was any service warranties on that work that got done.
Yeah. I'll follow up with Jeff on that parking lot. That was one of the things that we talked about, what we met about. And he mentioned that probably the first, one of the first things at the high school, so.
Yeah.
We also last year during the sick committees, Casey, we had Jeff led the, because I was on it. The maintenance portion of the of the meeting. And we did do an evaluation and we had everybody in. A person from each area do an evaluation on the building. So it'd be kind of interesting to see those two. If he still has them.
I'll see if he's got them. What the, what we were gonna do, what we're going to do is I've got a. Process, we mentioned evaluation, so that reminded me of this is. Our group that we had planned to get together, we were gonna be breaking up into smaller groups and walking through each facility. And then. Before before we did that, we would have a meeting and we would walk through this. Process that we would use to evaluate the building, where we would be looking at specific categories. Sometimes when you walk through, and I don't know how they did it last year, that really, I'm not trying to get at that at all. It's nice to be able to say, well, what should I be looking for? And so you look at they, this, we'd have a group that would be paying close attention to kind of the. The grounds or the outside of the school and then the inside and then heating and cooling and some of the mechanical things. And. I mentioned outside, which would include parking lots, sidewalks, those kind of things. And so. That those committees, they go through and they look at it and there's a, there's a way that we teach them to score things, then they come back together. With the things they listed and as a group, they come to consensus about what are the most important things. And then that leads to kind of a master list of projects. And so I think if we can get, when we can get that group together. I think it's gonna be time well spent and we'll have an end product that's gonna be very useful to. The school board as as we look to make decisions and make budgets on projects.
Yeah, and you know what we also used to do, Casey? We used to meet, was it every meeting, Dwayne, somewhere else for every other meeting? We started the meeting.
Yeah, we did that a couple of their area, I think it was every alone, when we met at the different buildings, just to. And they were in that building or. Like at the middle school or red, yeah.
Like a half an hour early, we started at a building to do a walkthrough. The thing we made a mistake as is we did the outside soccer fields, I think in November, and that wasn't very. But it was, it was actually nice to see what needed to be worked on and it kind of. Gave you a perception of of what we needed to make sure to to look at in the coming years too.
You bet, you bet.
All right, well, we'll let you kind of work on that and. Hopefully, we can get together soon and be able to do some walkthroughs and look at some things like that as. So any other questions, any summer projects, folks? If not, we'll go ahead and jump into the budget reports and kind of see what Gary's got for us there.
I'm gonna take it easy on you tonight. Those budget reports, if you look at them, they haven't changed a lot from the prior month. And the reason for that is payroll won't get posted until tomorrow. So they're not real valuable. The 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 reports on the management fund. Silo and pebble are fine, but the overall reports as far as line item. And certified budget, they're gonna be inaccurate because of payroll not being posted. So when that gets taken care of, I'll send you out a revised report for those.
Any comments on the Gary on the local sales tax fund? He just opened that up and. That didn't really change.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of change, like. Yeah, like Casey said, we've really slowed down our expenditures. And so if you notice, there's not a lot of changes in some of those. The this month's bill list too doesn't have much for expenditures in either silo or or the local option, sales tax fund.
Okay. All right. Then just go ahead and move on. I think we did, if any questions for Gary, I guess we get a chance to see those once they're updated and forwarded out to the. To the board. The other would, moving on, we have the correspondence announcements, information come up last day of school. Obviously, that's not happening. We just got the graduation coming up then in June. And. Are you wanting to do a special board meeting end of year bills, Gary, at this point still? I know that's.
Yeah, we could approve that at the regular board meeting in June. Just kind of tentatively, though, we were looking at maybe the twenty sixth, that'd just be a noon meeting, probably take. You know, fifteen minutes at the most.
All right, any other suggestions for the June fifteenth board meeting?
I just wanted to mention about that. Again, the hopefully. We can meet in person in the boardroom. That's that's what my hope is. And then in terms of, we haven't been able to get back to superintendent evaluation, so it's likely that we'll have to spend. I I've been requesting that we wait until we can be meet in person, so, or at least the majority of us. So we'll probably have to set aside some time. To be able, I mean, we're just know that there's probably gonna be a chunk of time that we need to spend on that on the fifteenth. And then if if it's not looking like that, we'll probably just have, we'll discuss some other options, but maybe on what that might look like. I don't know yet, but I'm just in my head, I'm just thinking then on June fifteenth, we'll be, I'll be in the boardroom, so.
Yeah, and I'm thinking here to trying to remember the date, we need to have the evaluation done. I was thinking it was in May.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, I was gonna ask Casey, do you have a deadline for for that evaluation?
Well, the administrator, I guess, for principals, it's May fifteenth, which you, which we got those done, but. You know, again, given the situation that we're in, I know several of my colleagues that I've talked to. They're doing the same thing, so I don't know that. Anybody to be super worried about that.
It's not a hard date. There's not a hard date that we're up against.
No, there's nothing that's gonna get us in trouble that, no, you know, so we we'll get it done.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, we will, I would say that in June, we want to, because I'm thinking in the past, we, I was thinking that the board approval was in like May or June in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
So. All right, if there's no other comments, suggestions, I guess I would ask for an adjournment, motion for adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Hey, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks again, Dwayne, for managing the meeting. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, you're welcome, Karen.
The wifi did work, but I was, I'm shocked. I'm so shocked, nothing else worked.
Enjoy your time down there, thank your daughter.
Oh, thanks, thank you. I'll be back Wednesday.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Everybody.